Good evening, and I would like to say welcome to the viewing audience to our called emergency meeting for the Cabarrus County Board of Education for Wednesday, December the ninth. And I'm going to ask for a motion to call the meeting to order.
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Farr and a second by Ms. Blackwell to call the meeting to order. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. So we would like to start this meeting by first stating and turning it over to our board attorney, Brian Shaw, to state our policy that allows us to operate under these conditions for the night. Brian, are you online?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. This would be an emerg-- which is authorized by North Carolina's Open Meetings Law and also by your Board Policy 2300, Board Meetings. An emergency meeting is held when there's not time to have 48 hours' notice for a special meeting. And an emergency meeting may be called by the Chair, the Superintendent, or any two members of the Board by requesting to the Superintendent. And the meetings are only supposed to be held to address unexpected circumstances that require immediate consideration. I was contacted this afternoon by Superintendent Dr. Louter about the possibility of whether an emergency meeting could be held this evening in light of a spike in COVID issues. And I determined that yes, the emergency meeting was permissible under Policy 2300 and a North Carolina law. Because if action were to be taken tonight to deal with the closing of schools, there would need to be time for school officials and parents to make preparations. And so I believe it meets the requirements for an emergency meeting.
Thank you, Brian.
Who called the meeting?
I'm sorry?
Who called the meeting? Superintendent or yourself?
And the Board Chair and the Vice Chair.
Yeah, I certainly called. We got several pieces of information. We'll explain this just in a little while, but when we got some new information, then called the Chair and the Vice Chair to go over some of that information to consider the meeting. And we decided to do that and check with Brian to make sure we were good to go to call an emergency meetings.
And with that, I would just like to say, we appreciate everyone here online with us. We know this was considered to be last minute, and of course, none of us would even think about doing this at this timeframe. But it's critical that we hear this information, and we all agreed. So with that, I'm going to turn it over for Dr. Louter to do his presentation, and then I'm going to have each Board member to have an opportunity to speak and talk and to open up the floor for discussion. Dr. Louter?
Thank you, Ms. Grimsley. I appreciate that. First of all, I just want to reiterate what Ms. Grimsley said. We appreciate everybody being able to be here this quickly, certainly all the Board members. That's not an easy thing to do on a Wednesday night, so thank you for being here. The film guys, even to be able to do that, our technology people had to do this quite a rush, so thanks to everybody for being able to do that. And as we said earlier, I did, we have, believe it or not, since the meeting on Monday, there've actually been a lot of update, or many updates of information that has changed ever since Monday. So I know we're all aware that in this COVID situation, things change all the time. It really is amazing how much other indicators are in even since Monday. So when we got the latest update to those, and Mr. Schultz is going to go over those in just a minute, then he and I together called the Board Chair and the Vice Chair to really go over all that information. And to be honest with you, they're using indicators that are state-level indicators that have changed since Monday, local indicators that have changed since Monday, and then really some updates on some of our schools that have changed since Monday. And so when we went over those, we all felt like it was probably in the best interest of the school district to go ahead and call a meeting tonight and go over that and make sure everybody had updated information to make the best decision that we could for the school system. And really, for the county, that's part of this decision also. So at this time, I want to say a special thanks to Mr. Schultz, our Deputy Superintendent, who has been a part of this all day today, but also who kind of always jumps on and puts this in a format that we can follow, and hopefully you can follow, and people that are watching it at home can see as we go over that data. So again, Mr. Schultz is going to go through the data, and then when we get to the end, we'll certainly, as Ms. Grimsley said, open it up for Board members to ask questions as we move forward.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Louter. Ms. Grimsley, Mr. Farr, members of the Board, it's great to see you again tonight. So I'd like to go over that data that Dr. Louter described to you. Much of what, you know, we saw some data on Monday, and we knew that there were some significant issues across the state. I think what we're seeing right now, even since we looked at the data on Monday, of course, that was based on the Thursday at midnight, we've seen some changes that have resulted as the, what we're thinking is the spike from the Thanksgiving holiday weekend. So I'll share that with you. So what I'd like to do is just give you a preview on this slide. We'll go over, I have a slide or two for each of these bullet points, but you know, since we met Monday, the evidence of the predicted Thanksgiving COVID-19 impact, Cabarrus, by the NCDHHS, the Health and Human Services for the state, has now considered North Carolina a red county. So we'll go into detail what that means, because that was announced yesterday afternoon. Cabarrus has also met all the red metrics in the Cabarrus Health Alliance recommendations. We looked at that a couple of meetings ago, but I'll bring that back up, and we'll take a look at that as well. And then the highest one-day total of new cases in the county happened today. But we'll kind of go back and take a walk through the last six days of data that we typically look at, and see that that's pretty significant as well. And then in our discussions with the Atrium Health, they are, the Cabarrus Hospital is near capacity. So we've talked with them and communicated with them as recent as, what, an hour ago? So, and then we have an alarming rate of the percent positive of the tests that are being done in Cabarrus County. We have an update on that number as well. So we'll flip over just a graphic here for you to take a look at, and we now have 48 counties jump from, I was in the low twenties, to now 48 red counties across the state. So you can just kind of visually see that. We're tucked in there between what I believe is Stanley County and Mecklenburg. They're both orange. You can see us tucked in the middle of that red color. I'll break that down, what red means. So they do have a red-yellow-orange system. Red, as you can see, means a critical community spread within, and so for us, that's obviously within Cabarrus County. In the red, they look at, for all the areas, they look at the case rate per 100,000 over the last 14 days. They also look at the percent positive. So you know, we've been looking at that for a long time, and if it's greater than 10%, that puts us, hits that red metric. Also, the metric says, you know, 200 per 1,000, per 100,000 new cases in 14 days, so that, we are at 602, actually, the last 14 days, that rate per 100,000. You know, we have about 215,000 or so in our county. And then lastly, look at that hospital impact. So the red category means a high impact on the local hospital that we have here in Cabarrus County. So that's the North Carolina alert system, the COVID alert system. So we did switch yesterday to red. Those are the metrics that are associated with that. And then next, we'll look at the, so that's the state level. We'll also look at the level, the local county indicators. The Health Alliance, actually, has been, just today, was doing some Facebook Live sessions on this and going through this with community stakeholders. And we are in the red zone with this one as well. So they look at three metrics, the cases per 100,000. So you hear a common theme there with the state. They also look at the percent positive, again, another common theme, and then they're also looking at the hospitalizations. And then what, what the Health Alliance does is kind of takes that next step and goes to the recommendations for municipalities and for businesses, and they also do recommendations for schools. And you can see all of those metrics, what their recommendation is for the red metric is for schools to be in Plan C. And we do hit all of those metrics at this time in the red category, unfortunately. Next up is the daily cases. So this is a graphic right of the Health Alliance, which they pull from the Department of Health and Human Services. You can see that we're at 167 cases as of today. Pretty easy to see, that's the highest point on that graph. But you can also see the last seven days, they're clustered pretty tightly together there, so let me break that down for you a little bit. So if you take a look at that text box up there, you will see the last Friday, so we, you saw the data as of last Thursday, the number of cases. The last Friday went 75, so that was about a week out. And you think about the incubation period for COVID is somewhere 10- to 14-day range. So you think about that and how far away that was out from Thanksgiving. So it went 75, and then we had 161 on Saturday, 154 on Sunday, Monday's 122, Tuesday 99, and then Wednesday was 167. So we actually had two of the highest totals ever on record in Cabarrus County just in this last week, and that 154 is the third highest total, actually. So in the last week, we have three of our highest daily cases just in the last six days. And then that total's 778, and we haven't added Thursday yet. So last week, on Monday, I told you that we had 640 cases from Friday to Thursday, 640, and already we have 778, and we haven't added in Thursday yet. So we're going to be well, probably 150, probably close to 200 more cases this week than last week. It's pretty substantial. And then when we look at the hospitalizations, we see we're at 74. When I reported out to you on Monday, we were at 68, so that's obviously an increase. And again, the verbiage we're using, that's near capacity that they talk about when we talk to the hospital officials in their, in the atrium unit in Cabarrus. And then lastly, the percent positive jumped from when we met on Monday, 11.1. Today, it jumped to 13. And you can see there was significantly more testing this week, and we talked about that on Monday as well. But we, and we also went up in our percent positive to 13. So if you think about those metrics that I talked to you about with the NCDHHS metrics, also the local CHA metrics, you can see where all those numbers are pulled from that has put us into the red category. So it was a result of all these stats, the new cases, the recent spike in the percent positive, the strain on the atrium health system. Dr. Louter's considered this information and wanted to make a recommendation to the Board this evening.
And before we get to the recommendation, I guess the last thing that we didn't, you know, that we talked about a little bit, I think several Board members asked about coverage at schools, right? That we're, that becomes more and more difficult as we have more and more spread. So even though we're not spreading any kind of significantly at school, from person-to-person, teacher-to-student, student-to-teacher, we are affected more and more every day because of things that people do outside of school and therefore can't come to work, right? So today, ended up just this afternoon, pretty much talking to four schools, so two middle schools, one elementary school, and one high school, just to get a sense of where are you at, how many vacancies you had today. So one elementary school has 10 vacancies with two positives, right? Middle school has six vacancies, no positives. Other middle school has nine vacancies, no positives. And the high school has 10 vacancies with no positives. So just to give you an idea, again, two middle schools, one high school, one elementary school, that's 35 absences that they had, and only two of the 35 are actually positive. So because of, when you go through, well, why were they out today? Well, the two of my 10 were because their child's daycare was out. One of my 10 is because the spouse was positive, therefore the teacher has to quarantine. One of them is because my child was positive, so I have to stay out. One of them, or many of them are, I'm symptomatic today, I'm not positive, but if I'm symptomatic, then I have to quarantine because that's supposed to be, so I'm out for 14 days. The others are, well, I was a close contact, right? So again, the kind of spouse part of that, so I'm not positive, but I'm out for the next 14 days. So all of the principals there, you know, I said, well, the language that, you know, we've kind of used at the Board meeting is, is it where we can't have school tomorrow? And so we have not gotten to the point where we say, we're going to have to close school tomorrow because we can't cover it, but are there TAs that are pulled to cover? Yes. Are there coordinators who are in the school that are pulled to cover a class? Yes. Are teachers covered during planning periods? Yes. So all of them said, we are stretched to the point of that it's very difficult to cover, right? So that, and again, as I said, even on Monday, that gets more difficult every day. So when Mr. Schultz is saying, when we go from 300 cases a week to 600 cases a week, then you're doubling the amount of positives, you're doubling the amount of close contacts, you're doubling the amount of daycares that get closed, all of that kind of stuff, that then translates to, I can't come to work tomorrow. And so when we look at, again, state indicators, local indicators, and ultimately, school indicators, we're just actually to the point to say, we really need to consider going all remote, at least for a period of time, to let that calm down. So when we talk to the Health Alliance, and I probably should have said earlier, when we were thanking the School Board for being here and for being accessible, Health Alliance, as always, we talked to them numerous times today. I think Mr. Schultz said they actually were going over their chart about what their recommendations were on Facebook this afternoon. Dr. Coyle was going over that. But again, helped us answer questions. Atrium Northeast has answered, as Mr. Schultz said, all the way up till this afternoon to give us updates of what that looked like and what kind of problems they hire. And then ultimately, obviously, our principals. So all of them are working with us to get as much data as we can to you, but when we're stretched in all of those areas, and everybody there is essentially saying, I'm concerned, you know, that we have problems, we have too much spread, the hospital is full, we're having problems covering. And the predictions, really nationwide, but certainly here locally, were that Thanksgiving, the results of Thanksgiving are going to be high, right? We kind of heard that before. Well, what the Health Alliance and the hospital tell you is, those predictions were actually low. So the response to Thanksgiving has been worse than they thought. And now all predictions are that Christmas is going to have that same travel effect. And so if we can go remote for, you know, if we start remote next week, if we start remote on Monday, then the holiday break picks up, and then stay remote through the Martin Luther King holiday, that actually finishes us for the semester and gives us that two-week period, the 14-day period that health officials want to be able to look back to see, well, how bad was that Thanksgiving holiday, right? And so to go from, if we started remote on Monday and then stayed that way through the Martin Luther King holiday, then it's kind of a timeout to stay remote and to see how much we're affected by that, to then hopefully be able to pick up after that. So at this point, for all of those reasons, that is what I recommend that we do. We would still, for example, high schools are going to have exams, they do have state-required tests, and I think some of you guys have gotten questions about. Right now, those are not taken off the table, the state is still saying you have to take them. So, excuse me, if you have a state-required test, then, for example, if you're taking, if you're a sophomore and you're in Math III, then the sophomores would still come in to take that test, we would still provide the transportation for them, and they would come in in very socially-distanced settings, you know, 10, 12 kids would still take that test and then go right back home. So we've already done that model when we gave the PSAT before we actually came back. So students have already been there to take a test and go back home. We had no issues with that, socially distancing, that can still be done. And then finish the semester, and hopefully, because again, we all want to be able to get back to school, that that has stopped in community spread, and we can begin the new semester with something different. But for now, that would be my recommendation, to finish tomorrow face-to-face, which is what people are scheduled to do, Friday would have been a remote day anyway, and then go all remote for next week. Then you have the holiday break, and then you come back for what, in essence, is a two-week period to stay remote, that would finish through the end of the semester and go through Martin Luther King Day. Another way to think of that is to say that if you are a student who goes twice a week, that would be the equivalent of six days of face-to-face instruction that you would miss if we're all remote, which while certainly like and think there are benefits from remote instruction, I think taking six days off as a student to get through these surge periods is the right thing to do for the health and safety of the community.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start this discussion, and we're probably going to have to cover some territory that we all, as this new Board, has not. You know, we've been all over the place with this. Prior Board, this Board will start somewhat the same way. It's been a very divisive issue for a lot of reasons. There's a lot of emotion here for a lot of different reasons. You know, everybody has the best interest at heart for both kids and staff. We're all coming from different areas. That's just the way this is. That's just human nature. We've all taken a different position, but it doesn't mean, doesn't mean any of us were right and any of us were wrong. It doesn't mean any decision we're going to make is completely wrong or completely right, and that's just, that's just the nuts and bolts of it. I hate that it's become a divisive issue, that, you know, we all deem from a different place, and that's where we make our priorities, and I'll state mine. You know, and it's maybe simplifying it, but I've felt through this, I know teachers have felt like maybe I or some of the Board members did not support them in the school system, you know, or their position or their safety. I believe, and still do, that we have, and even on the call that Dr. Louter and I were a part of on Friday morning with the Health Alliance, it was, the statement was made that the school is doing a phenomenal job, and that was the quote, and I think you'll state that. Phenomenal job on making sure that these campuses are safe. You know, we have mandated masks all day long, we have social distanced, you know, we are cleaning, washing hands, we are doing the right thing on campus. You know, we wanted our teachers, our staff, and our parents to understand that they are in a safe place. However, that does not prevent what's coming into the school system for various other reasons that Dr. Louter alluded to. So it does affect us, you know, affect us in different ways. You know, it may not so much be affecting our students, but it's definitely affecting our staff, you know, versus, just like with the quarantine issue, which ultimately is going to affect, do we have the number of teachers in the classrooms to take care of the students that need to be there in person? So there's a lot of, a lot of stuff there that we have to absorb. You know, we all talk about metrics, and we can metric this to death, you know, and that, y'all have done a great job with your presentation, and those are, that's really important information. It still brings us back to our own personal decision about why we take the position that we're in. I've always felt like teachers, adults, they can take care of themselves. You know, they know how to do the right thing, they should be doing the right thing. That's the expectation at an adult level. Kids, not so much. If they do not have that person, that support structure, that advocate that's there taking care of them, they do not have the ability to do the same thing. So that's where it's always come from for me, that's what pulls at my heartstrings. So with that being said, you know, I want this Board to move forward for the right reasons. We are at an area that looks really different today than it did even on Monday, and, you know, that was made very evident today. There'll be people to agree with that, there'll be people to not agree with that, but we are where we are. I would just ask, as I go around the room, I want each Board member to make a statement, ask questions, do what you need to do. I will ask that you do it very respectfully. I don't want this to be a heated discussion tonight. We're here to make a very serious decision and to move this forward. So with that being said, Ms. Carpenter, I'm going to start with you.
Well, as they say, things have changed, but things haven't changed. Because basically, we were in a critical mode on Monday. We were at 11.1%. Our Superintendent told us we were in critical. So we haven't really changed. We were in critical then, we just hadn't formally been red, we were red then. So really, we knew we were going in that direction, so we just formally hadn't been said we were red, but we're red. So really, we haven't changed. We just have to make that decision. And we knew that community spread was going to happen, and it has happened, and it's just gotten worse. Now, one of the questions I have, I want to make sure that I have clarified, I know that we have gotten more quarantining for, and I want to make sure what we have gotten. Now, my understanding, we have gotten more teams. Now, is it not correct that we have now gotten, we had a total of four, three, three of our volleyball teams and one of Kannapolis? Now, we have had additional now, is that not correct? And we had some swim teams, correct?
Yes, ma'am. At this point, we had, I think on Monday, we had three volleyball teams, and Kannapolis made four. We now have four volleyball teams, and Kannapolis makes five, and we had, we have had to quarantine a varsity basketball team and the coach this week also. So ultimately, we've quarantined five teams. Have we, she said swim, have we quarantined?
And someone mentioned, now, this was not from us, and that's why I was, I wanted to question that.
Not entire teams. We did have some swimmers who had to quarantine, but it was not, it was not the entire teams.
But we have had a few, it hadn't been the whole team.
Correct.
Okay. So I was, I was just curious on that. But like I say, it's not, I have followed these things maybe more so than, I'm not going to say everybody, but I mean, two or three times a day. You, I mean, I follow the numbers, states, this. I am very concerned with the safety of our teachers, of our students, of our community. And y'all know that. And, and so I want to do what's right for everyone. And that's why I brought it up on Monday. I will stand by that. I stand by my decision, and I will stick by that. I respect everyone that's in this room, and we all will have our opinions, and I respect that. We make a vote and we go on. But I will stand by that, but I knew where the trends were going, and it has, it's gotten nothing but worse. And I knew what was going to happen. So like I say, we were critical then, and we've just gotten more critical, and so I stand by that. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Ms. Adcock?
Yes. Me and Tim were going to some schools this past week. We went to three different schools, a high school, a middle school, and an elementary school. We really saw with our own eyes just the stress that the teachers are under, the stress that the staff are under, and it's because, you know, they can't get subs to come in the schools to relieve the teachers when they're out. And then we're hearing from a lot of the principals that the parents are calling in every single day, 15 to 16 students are not going to come back in in person. They've had as much as a 28% decrease in the number of students that are in those schools from when they started. So for me, you know, I know our children's education is important, and I think that virtual learning has not been perfected to a point where we really can feel confident, or I can feel confident to say that all of our kids are getting the education they need for that. But I do believe that this time, that this transition for this amount of time, which is only six days of really in-person learning, that it will be good, not only for our community, but I think it will be good for this Board to be able to take some time and think strategically about what we need to do, how can we get the teacher subs? Because if we don't do something strategically, we're going to be right back at this point again. And so we need to look at really what is going on. This, again, is new. Nobody in this room has ever been through a pandemic, so I think that as a community, you know, give us grace, because we are making the best decisions that we can, and we know this affects a lot of people. But for me, I also agree with Dr. Louter's recommendation.
Mr. Farr?
Can I say, sorry, Mr. Farr, I just want to say one thing, because Ms. Adcock reminded me, I should have said it earlier, I think a Board member asked for this, was, so three weeks ago, November 16th, there were 63% of all the students in Cabarrus County that were in person. That has now gone down to, as of last week, so as of Friday, about 59%. So almost, a little more than 4%, right at 4% of the students have, and certainly anecdotally to echo what Ms. Adcock said, principals, if you stop by, Mr. Schultz was at two or three schools today, I was at some earlier this week, and they all have said, we're having five, six, seven kids that are switching. So a lot of families are making that decision regardless of what the School Board does. So somewhere between 1,000, 1,200 kids just in the last three weeks have said, even though they've been coming face-to-face, are saying, I'm not going to do that now because of the surge. So sorry to interrupt before Mr. Farr, but I think it was important to kind of echo what Ms. Adcock just said.
Yeah. Well, just like Ms. Adcock said, it was an eye-opener to go to schools. I think each one of us should do that to get a better understanding. We can talk about it, you guys can tell us what goes on in the schools, what's going on in the classrooms, but until you see it in person, then you can kind of, you feel what they're going through. They're doing a magnificent job. The schools were clean, the people are so positive, they love on them kids so much, and I guess that's part of the reason I've always wanted them to be in school, because I know what kind of attention they are getting. And that's what, you know, that's why, you know, I'm going to have to eat crow, because I've said, since I was running for this position, that I want the kids in school, and I'm going to get them in school. But this thing is fluid, it changes every day. I'm in business, I've got some businesses, and it's changed, it's hurt, it's hurt us for a while, and so I know this thing, there's no playbook on how to handle it, and I think you guys are doing a really good job, and I know we've all been critical on how things are going, or what we would do, or what... And I know we've all been critical on how things are going, or what we would do, or what we should do. But what scares me more than anything, and is really brought to my attention this week, is the fact that, you know, our priority is kids. I get that, and I'll always be my number one priority is kids. But guess what? We got to have staff to take care of them while they're at school. And if they're not there, what my biggest fear is that some parent's going to take their kids somewhere to school one day this week or next week, and they're going to say, hey, you're going to have to turn around and go home. We don't have staff to handle it. We don't want to get to that. I think we're near that now in some places, but then you have other schools like down at Bethel and that part of the county, they got very little activity. I feel for those kids because, and families, because we're making a decision that's, and it's going to affect them too, but, and I know they're going to say, well, my gosh, let us go to school. I get that. But like I said, the, it's changing. And I really hate, it bothers me to have to do this, but I really, I think it's time that we're going to have to go to see. And some people, like Holly mentioned, you know, they think some of us board members don't care about the teachers, but what very few people know is the fact, I have a daughter that's a teacher. She was, she was a nurse for 13 years and decided she wanted to get in the school system. So I've always valued the staff. And so I promise one thing, is we're going to get them kids in school, and we're going to get them in school soon. But I'm going to have to go with the recommendation right now. But, you know, my hope's that when we start back January the 19th or whatever, we're in A for elementary and exceptional kids, that they need to face-to-face learning. And I know that's too early to make that promise right now, but I think that's the intentions of this board. If the things go better and go well, that, I'm pretty sure that's our intentions. Thank you.
Ms. Sanders?
So I was on C Monday, and I'm still there today. Anytime we've got significant spread in our community, we've got to listen to our community, and I'm going to always do that. Here's my concerns, though. We've got to make sure we're doing something for our EC children. A lot of them cannot take being out of school. So if we can make a plan that caters to our EC children, we need to do that, and we need to do it fast. The other thing is, I do not want to come back in January where we are today, and we have had opportunity not to do that. I hate this mess. I also want to know if we're working with the ABC Science Collaborative, and how, what does that look like? What are we doing? I know they have created this 12 steps to safe re-entry into school. And I know on Monday you said that you were talking with them. I don't know, I want to know what that looks like, and how they are helping us, if they are helping us, with the transition back safely to school. I definitely want our kids to be on A, because to be honest with you guys, B or C, they're not working. Because in B, our kids are not receiving an education from a TA, from the janitor. And I don't know if that's what's literally happening, but from what I understand, our kids are being placed in a classroom with whoever is available. They can't learn that way. So our EC children aren't learning, our AIG students aren't learning, and our regular kids aren't learning this way. So I am on C, been on C, but we will not come back like this if I have anything to do with it.
Thank you. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, thank you. Other school districts, others in Charlotte, everybody else is still in school, right?
Yeah, I know that Charlotte transitioned to C, kind of the same time period as we, as Chris is suggesting. And Chris, I don't know, I haven't heard any updates today, because my head was kind of buried in this stuff.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anyone around us that has made a different decision, but, you know, sometimes that depends on when board meetings are, et cetera. But other than Charlotte Mecklenburg, I'm not aware of any.
Have you talked to Kannapolis, what are they doing?
I'm not aware of them having another meeting, so as far as I know, they haven't changed.
Okay, so they're not changing. Members in the other counties seem to be a little higher than we are. I mean, I feel for, again, we've got community spread, but we have a school system that we take every precaution possible to make sure it's safe for our staff and our students to come into the building. We're saying that the spread is not from our school system, it's out there in the community. So I'd like to at least hear why closing the schools is such a great idea to solve the problems that our community is facing. I don't see that happening. I know from a parent perspective and a child, EC child, they struggle with the online learning. It's nearly impossible. It's a big burden on families and parents. You know, I'd like to have five days a week, but two days a week is better than nothing, you can socially distance. I would rather we do an option where if we've got an issue at school, we close the school for a period of time than to close the whole system. Thank you.
So Mr. Walter, I want to clarify what you just said. So you're talking about closing individual schools versus?
Yes, if you have an issue at individual school, I would rather.
Like if we had clusters or that type?
Correct, so Bethel, like you were saying, would remain open.
We're going to ask Dr. Lauter a couple of questions before we actually take a vote on this, so I'll add that to the list. Ms. Blackwell?
So I've been listening to this for a long time. Some of the things that we've asked multiple times is if the staffing was okay. If TC, or TAs could be pulled, and people, teachers who are quarantined, if they could teach from home while the children are at school, and a TA could sit in the classroom while the teacher teaches from home being quarantined. From what I hear, most of the issues are with the quarantine, not with the positive results from COVID. I hear the quarantines of the sports teams. I am disappointed in many of these cases that we are putting sports, which I'm all for, over education. And if we have to do anything, I would much rather stop sports than educating my children. I do know that even if these kids are in school and being taught in a library, from what I understand, that I heard from the tours, that they're being put in libraries and have to have a TA or someone in there with them, it's better than them being at home alone by themselves, which is what is happening to a lot of these children right now. They don't have the option to have a parent at home with them while they're trying to log on for their classroom, for their classroom settings. All of these numbers are being spread through the community. We knew that during these holidays, this was something that I brought up many, many months ago, that we would always have a spike during the holidays. We are going to have a spike over Christmas, we are going to have a spike over Valentine's Day, we are going to have a spike over Easter. We are going to continue to have spikes. We cannot keep these children out of school for all of these continued spikes. I think in some cases, many of the adults need to take personal responsibility and make sure that they are not putting their own selves at risk by getting out into the community and doing things that they know are going to continue the spread. This is not being spread at school. The CDC has recommended that all children need to be in school. Dr. Lauter, I'm alluding to the fact that you stated previously that the CDC is losing credibility with some of the things that they have said, but they've also now said that the quarantine time does not need to be as long as what we're doing. Where are we with that decision on the quarantine? We had mentioned that on Monday, and they are lessening the quarantine time now, or have mentioned that it doesn't have to be quite as long as we've been doing.
Mr. Schultz, let me answer, and you may add to it, just because some other people ask about the CDC comments. So what happens is we get, we get emails all the time, as you guys know, and literally you get one that says, the CDC says this, and then the next day you get one that says the CDC has said something opposite. Unfortunately, over the last six months or so, that's actually been true. The CDC has gotten involved in all kinds of stuff, changed some of their guidance before, said, this is what, literally said, this is what you need to do to open schools, and then politics got involved with that, and a week later, changed what they said you need to do to open schools. So while obviously the CDC is very important, and I'm certainly not disparaging the people that work there, there are some mixed messages there that kind of float all over the place. So because of that, whenever we kind of leads with the CDC says, unfortunately, sometimes that has become confused for a variety of reasons. And even some of this quarantine information, so Mr. Schultz can probably clarify better, because I know he's done it, but at the end of the day, I want to make sure that, that the board understands, because we didn't clarify this the other night, is that we will work with the Health Alliance to determine quarantine. So sometimes the CDC may say, and I think may have, which is what Ms. Blackwell's referring to, well, now it can be seven days, now it can be 10 days, it could be 14 days. Again, with our literally daily conversation with the Health Alliance, rather than we as educators making that decision, we will consult with them and say, it's 14. So if our Health Alliance or the health officials are saying that really should be a 14-day quarantine, that's what we're going to go with, because these are the people that are here with us locally. That might evolve, and it might change, as Ms. Blackwell said, I know there's been some of that nationally, but we're still going to say, if the Health Alliance says, yep, 10 days is good for this, because here's the situation, then we confer with them to be able to say, this is what we want to do. If it says 14, then that's what we're going to do. So that, we are going to defer to local people on that, even though there may be some changes in national guidance, because I think we have to do that. That's what we'll be able to, this is the health decision in the county, and we kind of, that's where we'll stand. So I don't know, and Mr. Schultz is working with them almost hourly along with our HR department, so he may have some more insight, but I think from an overview, that's probably where we land.
No, other than, I know it's on the agenda for our meeting tomorrow with the Health Alliance, and the intent is to change to those recommendations by the beginning of January. So with that, but that meeting has to take place tomorrow, we have to have a discussion about that.
So unfortunately, we don't have any clarification on quarantine times for tonight's meeting either. So, you know, Monday night, I mean, we were just here two days ago, and I had a statement that I wanted to make, and I never got to make it. So I'm going to make it tonight, because there's some points in there that I think are very vital to this conversation. One of them being that I received information about Mount Pleasant High School. That, and these numbers are extremely alarming, and that's why I want to bring these numbers up. Eighty-six kids are failing all four classes. 150 are failing three. 200 are failing two classes, and 400 are failing one classes. The more that we've learned about this virus, the more that we know that it is not being transmitted at school. Distancing and wearing masks work. The schools are safe, and they need to be open. Parents will always have the option to homeschool their children. If they do not feel comfortable being at school, that is completely understandable. But many of these high schoolers' GPAs are being ruined by this. And that is not something that everyone is talking about. It's not just about this virus, and the effects on, potential effects on some very minimal people health, people's health. 99 percent of people recover from this virus. That is a huge number. People who are immunocompromised certainly can maintain whatever protocols that they feel are necessary. But there are many people out there that feel that if they get COVID, like all viruses, they will recover from this, move on, and get over it. Most of the cases are community spread. We understand that Governor Cooper may shut down everything, and we may not have any say-so about this. If I could have it my way, we would be in Plan A in a heartbeat. Being a parent with kids that are suffering with this virtual learning, I have seen how they are not able to thrive in this kind of situation. I've already had enough people who have contacted me as well who are having the same issues with their children. I wear a mask, I social distance, because I feel like that's the right thing to do right now. But I'm also fearful for these children who are not getting the education that they need. So with that said, my, my statement is what it has been from the very beginning of this, and that is that I think these children need to remain in school, and I will not vote for virtual learning for Plan C.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell. So I feel like it's a point or a place here tonight to kind of educate the general public, if you will, on how board meetings are ran, because we've been asked about how things took place, i.e., your statement for Monday night. So number one, a work session is what it is. That agenda is, is for us to have discussions, whatever is on that agenda, that is what's put before the board to have the discussion. We do not normally take action, that's placed on the business meeting the prior Monday, and that's just the way it's always worked. And not that we can't change that, which we did amend the agenda Monday night to realign a couple of areas that needed to be. When that was brought to the table by Ms. Carpenter, I was more than happy to do that. But once we put that out there, if no one asks for discussion, and I don't care who it is around this table, anybody at any given time, once there's a motion and a second on the floor, anybody can key up and say, we would like to have discussion on that. You should feel comfortable, you know, you should know kind of the process. I know some of the newer board members may not, so I feel like that's, this is the time to reiterate that. I think it's confusing for the general public how we actually operate business, but there is a logistical way we have to do it. When I don't hear that as board chair or any board chair, we assume everybody is ready to move forward for a vote, and that's what took place. So should that ever be a question, I want the board to feel very comfortable that at that point in time, when there is a motion put on the floor, and there is a second, if I don't hear any discussion or anyone asking for discussion, we're probably going to move forward with the vote. It's your time to back it up, and for board members that have been around, you know, I expect you to kind of know that. And it's okay. If we take a vote on a night that is not something that you felt you were comfortable with, that business meeting is the perfect time, we amend agendas all the time, to go back and say, you know, we had a discussion or we made a decision, I would like to revisit that. It is up to you to make that statement and to get the second to amend that agenda, and we can do it, it's not an option. Unfortunately, with this situation, we didn't have, nor did Dr. Lauter have, nor did Mr. Schultz have, nor did the Health Alliance have the information Monday that we have today. And that looks a whole lot differently. So, you know, it's ever-changing, it is a bad place for all of us to be every given day, and this goes against every grain. Everybody knows exactly where I have stood with this position. I want these kids back in school just as badly as everybody else. That has been my goal, I've been very clear on it. When I talk about metrics, you know, I want to talk about metrics about mental health, how kids are impacted about this, how kids don't have advocates at home that help sit there with them with Chromebooks and maneuver them through drop boxes, and, you know, how do they get their grades accounted for? We're all there for different reasons. But the most important part is, is it has become very divisive. We've got to make a decision for all the right reasons, and that's why we have meetings. It's okay for us to have an emergency meeting. It is okay to get this message out to the general public so they understand where we're coming from and what's before us to make a different decision, if that's what needs to be. So I just want to say, you know, this is, this is one of the other reasons I have put out there to create a task force. Dr. Lauter and Vice Chair Fur and I will be meeting with Mr. Schultz tomorrow to talk about this, because there is a lot of information that comes out, and there's a lot of stakeholders that may not have been at the table before that we need to involve. We need to involve counselors and past educators and parents and teachers, and we would like to even have some student input, you know, I think it is important. This is the time that we are not reactionary anymore, and I know y'all are working the best you can. And most days, that's probably what it looks like. But we need to be proactive, we've got to move forward for some type of emergency plan for our system so that we do have metrics to work with. You know, they do change every day, but we need to have some indicators in place that if we're in this phase or we're doing this, that, you know, we know how to move forward next. So with that being said, the recommendation is to make a transition to all remote learning, beginning on December the 14th of 2020, ending on January the 15th, knowing that that's a Friday, that that Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so the students and staff would be returning on the 19th. You know, we know that it's an immediate addressing of the Thanksgiving holiday surge in critical data points. It's proactive, proactively addresses the predicted COVID-19 surge as a result of exposures during the December and New Year holidays. And maybe this is a time for a timeout, you know, to go into what we might call a quarantine timeframe and get us through the holidays, and then see how things, you know, look at the other end of that. So with that being said, I will ask for a motion, or if there's any other discussion that needs to take place. It's a very serious decision. There's a recommendation on the floor by Superintendent Lauter, and I would just like to have some extra input.
Ms. Chairman, I would, two questions. First of all, now, this is for all the students? Or is there any exception for exceptional children or any categories?
So I did ask Dr. Lauter if he would speak to pre-K and EC, because we know Charlotte Mecklenburg's system is doing things a little bit differently. So he understands that we do have that question tonight, and I'll just let him address that.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. So right now, my recommendation would be that we, that everybody take this break, because again, of the spread in the community more than anything else. But I will say, actually, one more thing, somebody that I looked up the information with here, I apologize, so about districts that had changed. So Burke County, which is not really one- So Burke County, which is not really one of our neighbors, they have gone to all remote learning. And Johnston County, that the main reason I mention is because they are a suburb of Wake County. So they're actually the closest district to us. When people compare like districts, we're almost exactly the same size as Johnston County. We're kind of exactly located to Charlotte the way they are to Wake County. So they, they just made that decision, which is not necessarily one of our neighbors, but you asked that question. So right now, again, I would recommend that everybody kind of take the timeout till we get there. But much to what Ms. Adcock says, when we come back, we may be at January 15th. And let's say that spread over Christmas is, you know, exponentially worse than it is now. We could be at 19% or whatever at that time. That certainly would be, or as we're working through this, the time that it may not be appropriate to bring everybody back or to, because spread is considerably worse. But it might be appropriate to bring back some categories. So in Charlotte Mecklenburg, I think as you referred to, brought back pre-K but didn't necessarily bring back other levels. Middleland High School has never returned at Charlotte Mecklenburg, for example. But there are quite a few districts in the state that did pre-K and self-contained special ed classes, for example. They came back for a two-week period to see how that went and then kind of added groups in. So it wouldn't be my recommendation to differentiate a group now. But depending on the data, when, you know, we're looking at that, it may very, it may be very appropriate to bring back smaller groups with less risk of transmission that also is not going to significantly expect, impact the community because it's a smaller group of kids, a smaller group of teachers, a smaller group of bus drivers, for example. So again, right now, I wouldn't, I wouldn't peel out categories for that. But it could certainly be appropriate to stagger depending on what we're looking at at the time.
The question is, what about adapting the county-by-county COVID-19 alert system? Do you not think we need to adapt that with this motion or not adapt it?
Well, I think, you know, Ms. Grimsley alluded to before that, you know, some of everything that we're dealing with here is when you transition to a new board, there's an election, you have new board members, a new board chair, new board vice chair. Things change, right? There's a new, there's a new system, there's a new way to communicate. We certainly spent a lot of time this afternoon working on how we can communicate better, how I can communicate better, how we can, and certainly part of my job is to make sure that we work on that. So we're all going to be working on that. And I think tomorrow, when we meet, one of the things is to try to figure out, well, what are there things that we're going to set? Are we going to set certain data points? Are we going to involve other groups in those data points? I don't know exactly what the will of the board is going to be. But all of those things I think are out there. They're readily available. We can pull them, whether that's, you know, state, local or data from our employees, what we kind of said on Monday. If you'll just say what we want, we can run those weekly. But as we have a leadership change and communication change, we've just got to get on the same page and make sure that's what we're asking. So I think that very well may be appropriate. But I think we've got to kind of get consensus on what's appropriate.
Well, I didn't know if we needed to put that in the motion because if we had had that in the motion, we would have known right away. Because when you're red county, it says 10% and above, you would have automatically went there. If you're eight to 10%, when you're an orange one, you can be in B or C. If you are yellow, you're five to eight percent, you can be in B or C. You know, if you're in a green, you can be in A, B or C. But you've got some kind of thing that you can be in a metric. And you know that you can be in there. You can't be an orange, be in an orange zone and say, I'm going to go to A.
Carolyn, can we have the task force evaluate that? Can we have the task force to evaluate that?
Well, I, I, that could be, but that's why I'm asking.
Ms. Carpenter, I'd like to take that one. So that was my whole point for, you know, asking for us to create this task force to bring those people because, you know, and, and this is probably not going to be received very well at all. But I've made this statement today, so I might as well make it publicly. That is the community. That's from the Health Alliance. That's where we are, is Cabarrus County. But with those indicators, we are not closing big box stores. You know, we are not doing anything in the community of where there is a lot of this probably truly taking place and exposures are at a greater rate. So I'm not so sure that just because, we might use that as a guide or a directive, but that might not be the reason why a task force says, okay, because we're in that element there, there's nothing going on in the school systems. We're doing great. Our numbers are good. We're not having spread in our, our schools. We're doing everything great. Per the Health Alliance, we are, we are doing a phenomenal job on our campuses. So I don't know that we would do that, but we might. So I think that's one of the things that we would put forth to the task force. What do we use? Because it is, everybody does have a different opinion on which ones we use to make different decisions. But I think that would be a great thing to ask the task force to take a look at.
Okay, well, that, I didn't know if it needed to be and that's the question I was asking.
Yeah, certainly we're going to talk about that tomorrow. The other thing I want to add just about special education classes because it certainly comes up when people say, you know, these are our most vulnerable classes. That's absolutely true. That's absolutely something that we're focused on. But it also is probably the, the riskiest places to be for transmission. So the only classes that we've really closed over this period are special, self-contained special education classes. So if you have, you know, an autistic class where the majority of the class can't wear masks because of their disability, and we certainly have that, then if a student, you know, went to the beach and comes back to that classroom positive, then the whole class has to quarantine because kids interact with each other without a mask. They interact with their teacher without a mask. And so our teachers, who to be quite honest, are out there working their butts off and putting themselves at risk to educate our vulnerable populations, are also putting themselves at risk. And so those classes are the most likely to be closed and the most likely to have transmission. So to make sure that we do that safely, it is a priority. And it is, there are students that are our most vulnerable. But we've also got to protect our teachers and make sure that we can set that up to the extent we can. Because if we just, if we're doing that and only that all the time, those are the classes most likely to quarantine and the classes that we've had to close down. We have closed four or five classes in our school system and they're all self-contained classes, I believe. And it's because, not because there's transmission in the classroom, but because somebody who, who had it outside, a teacher, a student, a teacher assistant comes in and then, well, have you had contact with these people? Well, yeah, because they couldn't wear a mask or they couldn't be six feet apart. So we're going to have to shut that class down for 14 days. So that's part of, certainly, we have a plan for that. We work with our EC department, we're working with the Health Alliance. But it is, it is a priority and it is something that you have to keep on the radar that it's not just as simple as, oh, let's do that. Because it still follows the same guidelines. And those students and those teachers are vulnerable and we have to remember that as we figure out the best way to educate them.
So I'm just going to ask you one more question so that you can answer it. And we talked about it. So the question has been, if there's more students going into remote versus virtual, then we're needing possibly less teachers. I think parents are having a little bit of heartburn understanding, well, if there's not as many at there, why can't their kids be in school versus remote learners?
Yeah, and so I think that's the other thing. Even when people are saying not in school. So first of all, let's remember even, like, sometimes people use the language, close the school. We're not closing school. Next week, schools aren't going to be closed. Teachers are going to be teaching. And again, as I said, they're going to be working themselves to death to try to make that as good of an experience as it can. Is it perfect? No, we are in the middle of a worldwide pandemic. And so education is not what it looks like and it's a struggle for everybody. But our teachers have, have worked themselves to death to try to make that a good experience. So when sometimes you say, oh, well, if some of the kids have dropped off, but then there are still five kids in the classroom, eight kids in the classroom. So what's that teacher doing? She's teaching eight kids in front of her or he's teaching eight kids in front of him and teaching the kids at home. So if they have to quarantine because they're not positive, they can go home and teach kids from their computer. Or students can go home and say, well, I had to quarantine for 10 days and now I'm back in the classroom. So they're constantly taking kids in, kids are leaving, but kids are not losing anything from that. And that's something that this group should know and understand. Is this a perfect environment to educate students? No, we are in a worldwide pandemic. But there are no teachers in the state of North Carolina that are doing more than ours are to make that as good as an experience as it can be. To juggle people in person and juggle people at home and everybody gets something is very, very difficult to do. And I'll put our people up against anybody. We don't have a district, you know, when we want to say compared to district, there is no district that's doing what our teachers are doing. And I could not be prouder of what they're doing. You guys should be proud of that. But it will not be perfect. It is not going to be perfect. It can't be perfect. But even with some of these vulnerable classes that you're talking about, I mean, I've been in self-contained classes with teachers who are teaching students at homes. Because another part of this is parents also are aware of these students being the most vulnerable. So a lot of our vulnerable EC students are not coming to school because their parents are afraid that they'll get it. So they're staying home. But they have an expectation that teachers are going to teach them and they're doing it every day. Many of them are even saying, you know, parents sitting there with them, we have a relationship with the parent that we haven't had as good a relationship with this. Now, I'm not saying that that's perfect. We're just saying, show me somebody that's doing it better, right? Because there's not anybody that's doing it better. Now, that doesn't mean that all across the state and all across the nation that we're not all struggling with how to teach people better. But nobody's doing it better than our people are. And to not lose anything from, oh, my gosh, I'm quarantined as a teacher, then I just pick up and teach over here and all my kids are being taught. Or, or my gosh, I'm quarantined as a student, then I'm home and doing that and not dropping anything from that? Nobody's doing that. But 2,400 teachers in Cabarrus County are doing that and not losing anything. And that's something that everybody in this room should be very proud of. It's, it's really very impressive.
Okay, I'm going to give you one more round to make another comment, make a statement if you have a question after that. And then we're going to have the discussion for the vote. So Ms. Blackwell, I'm going to start on your side this time.
All right, thank you. So first, let me clarify. I am in no way saying that our teachers are not doing a phenomenal job. I've got three kids that are in three different schools. I have talked to principals, I have talked to teachers about fixing their attendance and fixing their, their missed assignments. And I have been absolutely blown away by the response that I have gotten from the teachers very quickly regarding this. They are just as stressed out as we are and as the kids are. So I am in no way, shape or form saying that our teachers are not working their butts off because I know they are. My, my fear, though, again, is the fact that our students are not getting the education that they need. I'm worried about these EC students. Particularly, I'm getting emails from parents who are concerned about their EC students that are non-verbal, non-reading. They cannot learn on an iPad. They're, that is just not a feasible way to receive an education for them. So, you know, I just, I want everyone to understand that this is, this is a hard decision for all of us. And in no way am I saying that what I am saying is right or what you are saying is right. But we have to all go with what our gut says and what we think is the best option for children, parents, teachers and everyone else. You know, I go to work every day and I work in an environment in healthcare where I'm exposed to COVID. I wear goggles, I wear masks. I do it every single day. I've been doing it since March. There is a way to do this and do it safely. There is a way to keep yourself safe and not be exposed to this. I know that it happens because it's a virus and it can't always be stopped. But I just, I do want everyone to understand that there is a way to live your life and live it as responsibly as possible. And that is one thing that I would just please ask everyone to do. And I know that we've all seen it. And, and do what you can to stop the spread so that our kids can get the education that they need. Because this is really about them and this is such a detriment to their education. We have a lot of failing students right now. That's what's most important to me. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I think the key for me is we're not spreading COVID in the schools. We're doing a good job of keeping our students and teachers and employees safe. And the other part of that would, would be, as a parent, again, you know, as Laura was saying, I can feel that. I see, I see my son does not do as well online than he does when he at least gets some face-to-face. Plus, he's got his friends there. I feel for the senior, senior, our high school seniors. Our senior year, again, is getting ruined. We're going to make that worse by not even having an opportunity to come into school. I think, again, we should have an option for parents. If they don't feel comfortable, then certainly keep your student home. I mean, but in the event you are going to vote for this type of motion and thinking of the teachers, can we give them a teacher workday on the 11th so they can at least prepare for the online learning and not have to do it on their own time over the weekend?
Thank you, Ms. Sandage.
So I feel like a lot of the things that we're experiencing right now, you know, were going on already. Our teachers were overworked and underpaid and we were asking them to do a lot of things. Our students had mental health issues. They were undiagnosed. Now we're able to see those mental health issues and diagnose them. We, we had so many things that were going on in our community that we weren't addressing. We have an opportunity now to do that. And I think it starts with us and the decisions that we make on this board. Our numbers have gone up since we opened schools. And I think some of the blame comes to us for that. This break will allow us to show whether that is us, whether it's the schools that's bringing this virus or the numbers up. I think my heart goes out to the student that just lost her mom from COVID. You know, these things have been happening before today. They are just exacerbated by COVID. And I think this break allows us to fix so many things and allows us to come back refreshed and come back with a different mind and a plan so that we can get our kids in school in option A. I'm sorry, I have one more question.
Sure.
This is for Attorney Shaw. So I work in behavioral health and when COVID happened, they gave us a list of rules or policies that were going to change as a result of COVID. Has that happened with the school system? And if so, what are we doing? And I'm talking about like for testing. I'm talking about for absentees, intruencies. I'm talking about for lesson planning and things to those nature. And if they have done that, how are we interpreting that? I hope that makes sense. So they gave us state definitions. And those state definitions changed. Like, for example, in order for you to get a certain service, you may have to have an assessment. But because of COVID, you don't have to have an assessment. If you need that service, go ahead and get it. I hope that makes sense. So do we have anything? Have our policies been relaxed as such to allow us to make decisions? Well, students don't have to worry about failing at Mount Pleasant. Students don't have to worry about these tests that are coming up. Or if we don't, have we been asking for that? I know Charlotte Mecklenburg schools talked about advocating for, I know Charlotte Mecklenburg Schools talked about advocating for, you know, testing not to happen because of COVID. And I really hope I'm making sense and you guys understand what I'm axing.
Yeah, I know you said that was for Mr. Shaw, the attorney, but I can certainly tell you that we're, you know, there are, some of the things that you're talking about are legislated, they're literally in law. Some of them are state school board policy, some of them are local policies. Actually, everything that you said is not local, and we kind of have the choice, then this group makes that decision. But right now, for example, as we said, EOC and state tests. Right now, the state is saying you must take those, you must take them in person, they must count, you know, 20, 25% of your test, of your grade. All the districts, so when you say Charlotte Mecklenburg, that's one of the things that this large district consortium, the 12 largest districts, we meet once a week. We've met with the new state superintendent, we met with the state school board chair this last week. All of those are us basically saying, "Look, you've got to give us some flexibility with that." So absolutely, you're advocating for that, but we also have to comply with the law. So while we want that to be, until that changes, we have to say, "You have to come in and take that test in person." I hope that there's going to be a, the new state superintendent takes over and has indicated lots of things that you just said she's for, but she doesn't get to change them by waving a one, she has to go through the legislature. She may be very successful at that. It looks like we're going to have another education secretary, so national things will change. Then the state has to apply up to meet national guidelines without getting too kind of policy wonky on it. So I really think most of those things will be changed significantly by the end of the year, but they won't be changed by the end of the semester. So we have to follow whatever guidelines we have and then keep saying, "You've got to change some stuff." As I said before, we're in the middle of a worldwide pandemic. You've got to change the rules a little bit. But the legislature is about to come back into session in January. They may or may not change some things. I believe some things will be changed, and I think some things nationally will. But until they do, it might be March, then we've got to kind of comply with that and keep making sure that we're letting people know that we're working on that. So, you know, and again, you may think, "Well, is that a state law?" And this one will be and that one won't be. It's totally random sometime. Is that a state school board policy? Is it something that the state superintendent can change, or is it something that this group can change? And I assure you, when this group can change it, that'll be the first group that Mr. Schultz brings to the policy stuff is, "Hey, let's change this policy now." But, and Mr. Shaw can weigh in on that if he wants to, but when it's, "Hey, you guys have flexibility." But for most of this stuff right now, there is no flexibility, and so we follow the law.
Thank you, Mr. Fur.
Yeah, this is Brian Shaw. Ms. Sandage, I appreciate your question, and I was actually going to say that Dr. Lauter would probably be the best person to answer most of that, especially from a day-to-day operational perspective. He's exactly right that much, I'm sure the school district's doing whatever it can within the law, but some of the law is inflexible. It is what it is. And there may be changes along the way, and Dr. Lauter and his team are very well aware of what is happening, what's being discussed, what's being proposed, and they'll be on top of it.
And I'd like to add to that. So the, when Mr. Shaw on Monday described how the school board, the school board association basically delivers us, you know, potential policy changes. So some of those did happen. It wasn't, I don't think it's the type of policies that you were talking about related to testing and mental health services and things like that, but they were, there were some HR policy changes that we adopted with the board about remote working, about meeting as a board. So there were some changes that were made related to COVID. The state legislator took up the calendar law, so that was amended. Now, I can't say we all liked that, but we amended our calendar to meet something that we didn't know what we were going to meet. So I think the legislators did their best, took their best stab at it, you know, before we really knew the full impact of COVID. So I think that those are the types of things, I think, even as a board, you can advocate for with your legislative agenda. And, you know, policy flexibility or calendar flexibility has definitely been one of those. And then we have Amy Jewell, who's over our social workers, actually gave a presentation to, not the current board members, but the board members that were on in the last round, that she works locally with the truancy court. And so that, the truancy piece has been relaxed somewhat because, and then we also, the state board has really delineated the attendance policies within the state and defined, "Well, what does it mean to be able to, you know, be counted present for online learning?" So there have been some, to the degree that we probably need, probably not yet.
And I think that's what I'm axing. Like, is there anything that we can do as a board to help with advocating for relaxing these policies? Because granted, it's not just Cabarrus County that's going through, again, failing or truancy. And, you know, I don't know what's going on behind the scenes that may help to address this now so we can have our teachers and our students and our parents have one less worry, you know?
Mr. Fur.
I got one quick question. January 4th, we have a school board meeting that night, that Monday. Okay, so we can get some updates fairly quick on Christmas holidays, I guess. I don't know if that's enough time to get real good information. But I'd just like to say, this has been difficult. I agree with Laura 100%, and it kind of breaks my heart that I'm doing what I'm doing, honestly. But I'm trying to be, I'm trying to look at the big picture and understand that, you know, if we try to head it off a little bit right now, we could maybe stop something. Like I said, my worst fear is to show up at school and not have staff. And I didn't really understand that until yesterday. It was brought to my attention, and we got to see things firsthand, and that's a concern. I still am a, you know, I want to be in school. I mean, that has got to happen. Whatever we start January the 4th, our immediate plans and whatever resources, whatever it takes, we got to get the kids in school as soon as, you know, if it's January the 19th, and that's what it's got to be. But that's where I think if it gives us a little bit of time with this task force, maybe, to think outside the box, let them give us some ideas that we haven't thought about or looked at that can help us get the kids in school, especially the EC kids. We got to figure that out. That's got to be probably the first thing we got to figure out. Maybe between now and January the 4th, we can look at some options. But we have to, we got to use this time wisely, or it's not good for anybody. So we just need to make sure and concentrate on making good use of these next three weeks. Thank you.
Ms. Adcock.
Yes, I'll just go along with what Mr. Fur was just saying. I feel like that it's really important for us to take this time and to have a strategy, to think about the tracings that are having to be done in our schools and who is doing those. We need to talk about subs and how are we going to train subs and how are we going to have enough subs? And really think about if we do go back and open in Plan A, we have to be prepared for whatever happens. We have to be prepared and look at things and make good decisions on data. So I want children to be back in A as well. I feel like that human connection, there are some kids that have to have that, and they need it to thrive. And we've seen that some of the kids that are failing, you know, they were doing really great in school, and then you have other kids that weren't doing so well in school that are really thriving in the virtual learning. We've got to figure this out, and I think this will give us that time. So I continue to go with the recommendation that Dr. Lauter is giving us.
Ms. Carpenter.
Yes, and one of the things, oh, what is it? One of the things I agree that we need to make sure that we do look first when we do go back, as Ben mentioned, the non-verbal children, that seems to be one of the big areas with the exceptional children. I get more emails with that type of question. My child is non-verbal, they do not learn well on the virtual type learning, and that's a big question. Also, again, are you going to make sure, when are the EOG supposed to come? Are parents going to be told when their child will be able to come? How will they be notified?
Yeah, EOGs aren't until the end of the year, so the really only thing that's going to be affected in this is EOCs. And as I said, we already really have a model for that. The high schools already all tested their sophomores in PSAT, for example, and that was actually before they had been to school. So during that transition, I think everything I've heard from high school principals, that went very well. I haven't heard of any problems with parents. I'm sure it wasn't perfect. Somebody may tell you that, you know, they had a problem. But as far as the administration, most people coming in, it's a small group. So, for example, if I'm in algebra, well, I guess it's Math one now, then there may be 250 kids at a school that have it that semester. So that's the only group of kids that would come in. And transportation, we've already worked with that. So they'll be working on that to make sure it happens, but Dr. Hill and her group are on top of that. Art and John Legrand are on top of transportation. So the model for that already exists. We've already kind of discussed, shouldn't be a problem if the board passes this tonight. And then EOGs are in May. Hopefully, we'll have a vaccine and we'll be back regular in May, who knows? But right now, we're not there. But for high school, it's already, we've already done it, and it worked pretty well.
Okay, so just a couple of more points of clarification, if you will. So for students that are receiving any type of occupational or physical therapies or programs right now, how would that affect that group? How would that affect that group?
Yeah, so all that group, you know, again, there were services that I would say, you know, that were very creative and operated under this. So that's the same thing that will happen now during this time. They will pretty much do it the way that they did it during that time. Again, not perfect, there are issues around it. But again, a model already exists because we did it for the first nine weeks. And then sometimes, some of that can just say, "Well, this was already around this time," so they may be able to change it from, "It was supposed to be the first week of January, the second week of January, now can we just shift that over?" So again, our departments have already worked with that. Doesn't mean that that's perfect by any stretch, but they will operate under these three weeks like they did and try to move as much as they can to make that pick up whatever we decide if there are, you know, variations of that when we come back in January.
And then one more time for the pre-K and the EC, where are they?
Yeah, right now, I would say the same thing, that everybody goes remote, and that's not what we're going to do. But are those groups, would they, you know, come back more days a week, which we've already kind of had that model? Would they come back earlier? Again, because all indications are, if you're kind of following the science, is there's less problems, less transmission, smaller groups and younger ages. So again, other districts certainly may be appropriate to bring them back first, bring them back in a different mode. Those are all things that we can talk about, coming back. But some of it now is still about community spread and people being a part of that. So can we get through the holidays, call a timeout for that, and then decide how best to make that work?
Okay. I'm sorry, for right now, since parents are just now hearing this and getting this, and probably teachers as well, how do we address the materials where they're ending this week, weren't really prepared for that? I know we had that little bit of a discussion.
Yeah, I would say most of the time now, just because of the environment, people are better than that. And I think there was a time where, you know, it was like, "Oh, I left all my stuff if we went home before, you know, the holiday." Now that people are kind of, first of all, they're taking their devices back and forth every day because they have one-to-one, and there's less leaving that at school. But having said that, tomorrow, the group that's supposed to go to school will still go, they'll be open for that. Schools are still going to be open throughout this, as we said. So Friday and a remote learning day, there are people at the school. Some teachers teach from their classrooms anyway. Some teachers will continue to teach from their classrooms during this process, even with students not there, because they have access to some things in their classroom that they don't have at home. So there'd be no reason that we would say to do that. And then if a parent, if there's something that they need to pick, like today was their last day at school, they're not going to return till then, then they just need to work with the principal about being able to pick up whatever it is that they may have left, thinking that they're coming next week. But there's just much less of that in this environment. So I don't think that's a big issue, but they can certainly work with the school because we'll still be in, again, school for this week and another week, even before the holidays, to pick up or get things because, you know, teachers are still going to be teaching kids every day.
Okay, great. So with that, you know, I really, really, truly want to reiterate again, I think this is more importantly now for that task force to be put in place. You guys have the nuts and the bolts to a lot of the educational piece. You're the experts, you've got that. But I think we need to involve the people that it's impacted and to get, you know, even more stakeholders at the table that can give us good feedback to be able to, you know, make that, just make that whole plan more of a rounded, you know, option for the community to understand how things go, why we make decisions that we do, if there are decisions we can make better out there. I just, I really think that's going to be good. I do. I've gotten a lot of great feedback for it for a lot of good reasons. You already have your piece of it, when it involves the schools and CNI and transportation and all those other things. But the impacts of parents and/or teachers and all the other people that have been involved, I think, need to have a voice as well. So I'm looking forward to that. I appreciate the board members that have already sent recommendations or statements or questions in, so I'll compile those and have those ready for Monday night, and we will go over there. I think it's very important at this point in time that maybe part of that, or some of those objectives, is to create that legislative agenda and to meet with our legislators at this point in time, to talk with them about, you know, I know that I was told that the sunset law had made some changes for critical times, for teachers to be able to come back and teach when they had certain laws and rules and, you know, regulations that they had to abide by before they could come back. So I think there's a lot of good things this task force can address that's going to help us maneuver through this just a little bit better. So with that being said, there is a recommendation for us to return to all remote learning beginning on December the 14th, 2020, and ending on January the 15th of 2021. May I have a motion on the floor, please?
I would say we take the recommendation of our superintendent as his recommendation as written.
Okay. And may I have a second? Second. Great. So with that, I'm going to open it up for discussion. So Mr. Walter, give me one second.
Yeah, would you consider adding a teacher workday on the 11th to the 14th?
I'm sorry, what was?
Would you consider adding a teacher workday to your motion for either the 11th or the 14th so the teachers can be prepared?
Dr. Lauter, I think you need to speak to that.
Yeah, I mean, right now, I don't think that there's, it wouldn't be my recommendation right now. Again, we kind of have it set up, and because of, again, the strength of our teachers, that they're moving from remote in and out each day anyway. So I'm not sure it's the best use of the workday, but I'm certainly not against it if that's something that the board wants to do or wants to plan in. Again, I'm trying to kind of keep students, I think that the key is to keep students in a routine. And so if we do that, then they're expecting to have something, you know, during that day that we're now changing a few days out. And since we're close enough to the holiday, I think it's probably, you know, not to disrupt that any more than we already are. But I'm certainly, if that's the will of the board, that's certainly something that can be put in.
Okay, I'll just put that out to the rest of the board members. Does anyone else feel that is necessary or not at this time? And the only thing that I would say is we're meeting Monday night. We will have a board meeting on January the 11th, so there's plenty of time for us to get new numbers, new information. Dr. Lauter will be bringing that back to us. So I feel like we have some opportunities here with some future board meetings that will take place before we actually bring students back and/or teachers, that we, if we need to, we can make that decision a little bit better. So Ms. Carpenter, that was your motion on the floor. I'll let you speak to it.
I agree with Dr. Lauter. I think we should leave it just like it is. I don't think adding that, and we really need to keep our, all our days open. We don't know what weather is going to be like, and we may need that day.
Okay.
There'll never be any more snow days. We do virtual.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
So I'm just curious to know about the bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and all of those folks. What are they going to be doing during this time?
Yeah, very similar to what they did before. As Ms. Klutz said, that group of people has also been totally adjusted to whatever we put for them. I've had more principals this year bragging on the way their schools looked when the school began, because bus drivers who were normally driving a bus, who switched over and helped paint our schools and clean our schools, I mean, principals just saying, "This is the best thing that ever happened to our school." So it's a tribute to our finance department and Ms. Klutz that we're able to do that, but we just switch in. They're going to have alternate work assignments to be able to do that. It worked very well in the past. We haven't changed anybody's employment, and they've made a huge difference at every school they work at. So this will not change any of that. We'll be able just to flip them over and change their work assignment and, again, help our schools, which is what they do every day. But even when asked to switch their role, they, you know, ripped it out of the park.
Okay, any other questions, comments, any further discussion? If not, I have a motion on the floor by Ms. Carpenter and a second by Board Member Adcock. I would ask for all those that are in favor to raise your right hand. Okay, with the showing of the hands, I have Ms. Carpenter, Ms. Adcock, Mr. Fur, myself, Ms. Sandage, and opposing, I'm assuming, Mr. Walter and Ms. Blackwell. So that motion passes with a five to two, and I thank each and every one of you for coming in. I know this has been a last minute, and it's really hard to make these decisions. I know the general public has probably just had enough of all the emergency meetings being called and the things that take place, but it's a very important decision. We all take it to heart, the staff, Dr. Lauter, thank you, and Mr. Schultz for all that you do. We know that you put a lot of time and effort into this. And we don't always agree, you know, where this is going to go, how it's going to turn out, you know, what our positions are, our best interest lays, but we all come together for the right reasons, and I appreciate all the professionalism tonight, and I thank you, each and every one. I just want to remind you, those of you that have not gotten in your questions or comments to me and Mr. Fur regarding the task force, if you could do that. And we will be meeting with Dr. Lauter and Mr. Schultz tomorrow, so we look forward